Oh, I'm looking at seven o'clock, so Planning Commission come to order. We have a roll call, please, sir.
David Dahl?
Here.
Margaret Morin? Britten Sanders?
I'm here.
Greg Sutton? John Scott Walker?
Here.
Colleen White? Justin Lerman?
Well, as you said, Ms. Ireland, it looks like we have a quorum. Do we have any minutes? I see we have some.
From March night.
And if we had a, let's see, I got a call up here. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. We have motion second. Roll call, I guess.
David Dahl?
Yes.
Britten Sanders?
Yes.
John Scott Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll open the public meeting, and before we begin, I'll just give a brief note on how we conduct business. Normally, Ms. Ireland or staff member will read in the proposal that's going to be discussed. Once the application has been reviewed, we'll call the applicant and have them come forward. If they have anything to add, name and address, swear them in. And if they have anything to add, we'll take any additions. Oftentimes, there are none, but sometimes there are. Then we've got speaker cards, and I've got a couple here. Now, we'll go speakers in favor and speakers opposed on that particular issue. And when that's complete, we'll ask the applicant if they have anything to add after the discussion, and then we'll close the public hearing and come to deliberation on the board. At that time, there'll be no more input from the audience, from the public. And we'll discuss it, and we'll look. That's the way it works. So, I guess that would take us to six twenty, sir.
Yes, sir. And I just want to mention, we did get a couple of emails for two of the cases. I'll mention them more specifically when I actually get to those. They're for PC seven dash twenty and eight dash twenty. But for now, we will go into our first application, which is PC six dash twenty, which is a concept plan for plat application. The owner and applicant is VCE L five LLC. Address is seventy-five sixty-three Phillips Highway, Suite two zero eight Jacksonville, Florida. The agent is Conley and Liquor, Inc., ten zero sixty Skinner Lake Drive, Suite five hundred Jacksonville, Florida. And the property location is nine twenty-two Third Avenue South. The request is for a concept plan for plat approval for a proposed six-lot fee simple townhouse subdivision located in a residential multiple-family R and one zoning district pursuant to Section thirty-four five zero three of the Jacksonville Beach Land Development Code. The subject property is located on the south side of Third Avenue South between Ninth Street and Tenth Street South. The property has historically been a multi- multiple-family residential use with two duplex buildings constructed in nineteen fifty-four. The new owner and applicant wishes to redevelop the property with a six-unit fee simple townhouse project. The applicant's proposed site plan shows six attached fee simple townhouse lots that meet the minimum residential, multiple-family, R and one townhouse lot size and street frontage standards, which are twenty-five hundred square foot exterior lots and fifteen hundred square foot interior lots. Adjacent property uses include a vacant lot and single-family residential to the east, multifamily and single-family residential to the south, single-family residential and a church use in a single-family residential building to the west, and a church and single-family residential to the north across Third Avenue South. The proposed six-unit townhouse project is consistent with R and one zoning district standards.
Thank you, Ms. Ireland. Thank you, Ms. Ireland. Do we have the applicant present? I don't see anybody that I recognize. There's one. Name and address, please, and then swear you in.
My name is Charles Kennedy, one-two-three-seven-five Shaw Avery Drive, Jacksonville, Florida.
If I could have you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am.
You're gonna have to probably speak a little louder because you have your mask on, and as close as you can comfortably to the mic.
Thank you. I can be loud. I can pull out. I don't have anything to add, Heather pretty much summed it up.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. I'm sorry, I missed the questions for the applicant. Are there any questions for the applicant from the board? Okay. And I don't see the card, so unless there are any staff comments. Okay, that will close the public portion of the hearing, discussion, or motion.
Through the chair, I got a question from Ms. Ireland. Just wanted to make sure, to me, it looks like it meets the zoning requirements for an R and one. So there's no setbacks or any to the requests? Not that we can really, not that we need to look at that, I'm just curious.
Right, well, based on this particular site plan, no variances would be needed, but we're not looking at the building footprint specifically. You guys are just looking at the lots?
Right.
And making sure that they meet the standards of the R and one zoning district, which they do.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
David Dahl?
Yes.
Britten Sanders?
Yes.
John Scott Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll be looking at PC seven twenty, Ms. Ireland.
Thank you, Sheila. PC seven dash twenty is a conditional use application. The applicant and owner is Beach House of Jacksonville LLC, six forty-five Mayport Road, Suite five Atlantic Beach, Florida. Property location is fourteen oh one South First Street, and the request is for conditional use approval to extend the current approval for a temporary real estate sales office for a proposed condominium project located in a residential multifamily R and two zoning district pursuant to Section thirty-four, three forty, D thirteen, sorry, I've got a typo there, of the Jacksonville Beach Land Development Code. The subject oceanfront property is located on First Street South between fourteen and fifteenth Avenue South. The property received development plan approval under Site Plan seventeen dash three for the construction of a nine-story, forty-two-unit oceanfront residential condominium project, which is the Waterfall. The subject property has vested rights for a building height of a hundred and nine feet. The property owners originally received approval via PC fifty dash seventeen to place a temporary real estate sales office on the subject property while the design and construction plans for the oceanfront condo project were being finalized. The Planning Commission approved the request with the condition that the approval would expire eighteen months after the certificate of occupancy for the sales office was issued. Approval of PC fifty dash seventeen expired on October fourth, twenty nineteen. The property owners subsequently applied to extend the approval of that temporary real estate sales office and received approval under PC twenty-eight dash nineteen. Conditions of approval included a six-month expiration date, and the property owner was asked to address any maintenance issues on the site, such as paint, cleaning, and landscaping. The property owners cleaned the building and addressed the maintenance issues as instructed, and compliance was confirmed by our building official. The approval of PC twenty-eight dash nineteen expired on April third, twenty twenty. The applicant was informed by staff that they would need approval to continue operations at the office. Adjacent uses include residential condominiums to the north and south, single-family and townhouse residential to the west, with the Atlantic Ocean to the east. Continued use of the subject property as a temporary real estate office should not negatively impact adjacent properties as adequate parking, access, and landscaping have been provided, and the temporary office will ultimately be removed from the subject property. The city has received no formal complaints about the temporary office since approval of PC twenty-eight dash nineteen. And we did receive one email regarding PC seven dash twenty from a resident across the street at the East Wind Condominiums at fifteen oh five First Street South. They were unable to attend the meeting, but they had issues with the continued existence of the temporary office, and they have asked that the Planning Commission not grant another temporary extension. There is a copy of that email in your packets, so.
I'll receive that email. Any other questions, partake? Any expertise on this? Thank you, Ms. Ireland. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Please step forward in your name and address, and we'll swear you in.
William Corley, General Counsel for the applicant, six four five Mayport Road, Suite five, Atlantic Beach, Florida, three two two three three.
And if I could have you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
The floor is yours, Mr. Corley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a very straightforward application to ask for an extension of the conditional use. And what I'd like to share, the fact that we have brought in a significant new development partner to move forward. I'm not allowed yet to make a public announcement of who that is, but if you'll remember when we brought Margaritaville into town, the excitement that that caused. And this parking is going to seem level as Margaritaville. It's going to bring excitement and marketing and attraction. So we're doing what we need to do to move forward, and we're simply asking to extend for six months, and then you'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
A question to the chair. I, can you respond to the email around the maintenance and fence that hasn't been taken care of? Any maintenance on the property?
It's my understanding the complaint was about a rusty chain, which we replaced with a rope to resolve that problem completely. And we did attend to the, there was a problem with irrigation and the landscaping, which we fixed. And we had a team go over and look over the whole property. The trash bin container wasn't quite right, so that's been fixed. So we had parking, we had landscaping, and we kept the property up. And we're more than happy, if anybody has any other questions at any time, we'll always address it. So we're, you know, we want to be a good neighbor, obviously. Being attractive and respectful is, like, you know, keeps marketing, so we're all for that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I got a quick question for Ms. Ireland. It looked like there was an inspection at some point on the last approval for the maintenance.
That's correct. Our building official went out there and was just confirming what they had done. And I believe there was some pressure washing and painting, and like he mentioned, the landscaping and fixing some of that stuff. And our building official did go out there and confirm.
Recently.
It wasn't, no, it was close to after their approval. So we gave them some time to take care of some of those issues that was brought up at that meeting back in, okay, I don't have the date, of when that twenty-eight nineteen, that second approval. We gave them a little bit of time to take care of that stuff, and then we went out there and checked to see what had been done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corley, you have anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And now, we have a couple of comment cards. No, not on this one. Okay, that's it. There's no comments from the audience. I will close the public portion of the hearing and go to deliberation or motion.
Well, I have a question first, and Heather hopefully can answer this, or y'all can. How long do they typically keep a temporary sales office open like that? What's typical timeframe? Two years, three years, ten years, six months?
I'm not sure. I don't know that we've historically had too many.
It varies based on project. I mean, as the applicant indicated, they've turned over as a new investor, so it's probably, you know, it's been another year, two years for it to be out there.
Well, according to this, it's been like two years and a month.
Yeah, I remember the first approval.
Well, over two years, so, I mean, that just seems like, it has to be a point, it's just infinity.
Welcome to development. I don't want to put more burden on the city for inspections. Was that a request from the Commissioner's last approval? I can't remember that as part of the stipulation.
Yes, sir, it was. One of the stipulations was that they would, the conditions of approval were six months. I think they may have asked for more, but you guys gave them six months, and then to address any maintenance issues. And again, like I said, we gave them a little bit of time. I don't really exact, it was probably a week or two before the building official went out there and confirmed what they were doing. Those were conditions of approval.
Thank you.
I guess for my fellow commissioners, I would be, from my standpoint, I think, putting a similar contingency around just maintenance and repairs, I think, pending approval.
We'd have to be quite specific with contingencies. Well, you'd need a periodicity, and you'd need the exact tasks you wanted done. For that.
I make a motion to approve this extension. Let me just think. Was there a time additional? Another six months? I didn't see the request of time.
Didn't specifically, I don't know if you want to address that, Mr. Corley, if you had a time in mind. I know you mentioned another six months, but it wasn't specifically in the application for a timeframe, if that's okay?
Mr. Corley, go ahead, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the request is for an additional six months out of respect for the city's oversight on periodic basis.
Okay, thank you. Are you ready for a city inspection now?
Yes, and I would also offer to be available to Ms. Ireland on a weekly basis for any questions or follow-up. We will be Johnny on the spot whenever he needs to be. We have no problem committing, we'd be very vigorous about that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a six-month extension with an inspection. I'm going to leave that up to the city as far as timeline on that for inspection of landscaping and cleaning for the structure that's there.
And I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Ireland, we have a motion and a second with the conditions, and I saw you get those, any questions before we vote? Roll call, please.
Britten Sanders?
Yes.
John Scott Walker?
Yes.
David Dahl?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, good luck. This will take us, PC eight twenty?
Yes, sir, PC eight dash twenty is a conditional use application. Owner and applicant is Mr. Bobby Rose, one thirty-one North Tenth Avenue, Jacksonville Beach, Florida. Property location is the same as owner's, one thirty-one Tenth Avenue North. And the request is for conditional use approval of a type-two home occupation located in an R and two zoning district pursuant to Section thirty-four, three forty, D three of the Land Development Code. The subject property is located on the north side of Tenth Avenue North between First and Second Streets North, and has a single-family residential dwelling on it that has been there since nineteen sixty. The owner is utilizing a portion of the residence for his business, Barcode Equipment Service LLC. Because the business owner has a non-resident employee working at the home occupation location, he was informed by staff that conditional use approval as a type-two home occup would be required. Limitations of type-two home occupations include the following. No more than twenty-five percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling can be used for the home occupation. Garage and accessory structures are not permitted to be used for home occupations. One employee in addition to the residence is permitted. One non-illuminated sign not to exceed one square foot in area may be approved. Use of electrical equipment not normally found in the home is prohibited. Advertising of the home occupation cannot include a specific address. Commercial vehicles are prohibited from parking in the open on-site, and the home occupation must remain secondary or incidental to the residential use. Adjacent uses include multiple-family residential to the north, single- and multifamily residential to the east, a vacant lot directly to the west, and multifamily to the south. The continued operation of the home occupation at the subject property should not negatively impact adjacent properties as long as the business complies with the type-two home occupation standards of the Land Development Code. And we did receive an email on this one as well from a resident that is, I believe, on the same street, yes, Tenth Avenue North. They had concerns about safety issues with the narrow street and traffic, emergency vehicles. And you should also have a copy of this in your packets as well.
Is that the fourteen May at four fifty-five P M?
Yes. Sorry, yes, the subject is PC eight dash twenty from May fourteenth.
Yep. And did anybody look at the enclosed door shed? I don't know if you needed various to do that or not.
That will be for our code enforcement officer to investigate.
Thank you, Ms. Ireland. Is the applicant present? Please come forward. Give us your name and address, get sworn in, and anything you have to add.
I'm sorry, this is kind of just like, I had a car rental, something called surgery, and it's useless. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sir, I need you to state your name and address for the record.
Bobby Rose, one thirty-one Tenth Avenue North.
And I know you're having a hard time with your right hand, but I'm going to swear you in. Please raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, carry on.
As you know, I'm probably struggling to make a living for being my family, my wife, and contractors that I have. And it's hard to do with what's going on in the world today. With this coronavirus, it's killing us all. Business is horrible, I'll be honest with you. Many businesses have failed and gone under. I am a hundred percent service-disabled veteran from Angel Arms in Vietnam. Been exposed to it also in Okinawa, and a small island called Alhawetok in the Atlantic Ocean. I've always used service-disabled veterans for my business. I call them service-disabled veterans, and it works out great. Mayport provides a lot of electronic technicians who are going to live here. I'd like to give you the history of our company. We repair barcode scanners currently for Ald depo, working for them for fourteen years. We do not sell products with customers coming and going in our office. Equipment for repair is delivered and picked up by UPS. We are currently changing UPS schedule to where when we enter a package into their system, only then do they come to pick up. That may be only one to two times a week. We've always had a distance permit in our current with our, one we have now. We started in nineteen eighty-two at twelve oh eight North Eleventh Street with four people in my garage for two years. No complaints from anybody. In nineteen ninety-four, I bought one thirty-one Tenth Avenue and had eight people in my garage for two years. No complaints. Nineteen ninety-six, I bought three fifteen Third Avenue North and had many employees. In twenty eighteen, because of the business going down, I sold three fifteen Thirteenth Avenue with the economy going down, and moved back into one thirty-one with two contractors. And there have been no complaints until now. Needless to say, because of coronavirus, business has gone down, down, down. Currently, I have one technical contractor, full-time and one part-time when work peaks up, if it peaks up. They work in a small apartment, not in the garage, with a separate entrance. There have never been any problems until now. I believe the new rental residents across the street complained because of my two dogs, two small dogs barking. I have had two small dogs for about eight years, and they don't bark anymore now than they ever have in the past. And no one has ever complained. We're a small, quiet company, trying to make a living. We have lived at one thirty-one Tenth Avenue for twenty-five years and has always been a peaceful neighborhood. We ask that we be allowed to work at this level and be allowed to grow if business improves.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question, Mr. Rose, if I may. You mentioned today you have two, you have one full-time employee and one part-time employee.
Yes, when business requires it.
Right. Do you foresee that number growing? I mean, I know that's a low.
Not with the economy today, nothing's going to grow probably till it's fall, maybe this winter. Because coronavirus, gentlemen, is going to be around, ladies and gentlemen. It's going to be around for a long time. As you all know, the business is coming back up, but it's not good. Okay, but I don't really foresee it. I mean, we get multiple phone calls every day. It's scammed, it's spam. We don't get any calls from customers anymore.
Sir, I've got one more question for you, if you may. As far as repairing of the barcodes, what, is there a noise, is there?
No.
Okay.
No noise. I mean, it's a simple taking apart electronic, you guys probably have barcode scanners here. Just taking apart with a screwdriver.
Right.
And cleaning. With Ald depot, primarily we clean paint off the scanner.
Yep.
And that's it.
Okay. I guess the last comment I'll make for the record is, I get a little heartburn when you said there's eight people at one time working out of your garage.
Yeah, that was years ago when I first started. I mean, I was growing like crazy, and then I bought three fifteen Third Avenue North, and we had up to fifty-five people. But we had home Blockbuster video. We were prepared for Blockbuster video till it was.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And I have two speaker request cards, both of them opposed. The first one's Mike Morgan. Come up, sir. Name and address, and then raise your hand for swearing.
My name is Mike Morgan. I live at eleven forty-nine Second Street North, Jacksonville Beach.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to start off by, I'm strongly opposed to having a commercial business in residential area. If you look at the map up there, I'm eleven forty-nine, and I think I heard earlier that you're not supposed to do this in a garage. Check, check the permit that's granted for the building that they built. It was a garage. There's no garage door, there's no access, but it's a garage. With the, I'm also concerned about the potential growth of this business. We just heard about it at one time, we had fifty-five employees. I'll say, I'm already negatively affected at eleven forty-nine because my bedroom window is literally ten feet away from where they entered and exit this building. Parking is also an issue with the beach. With a full-time employee, including Saturdays and Sundays, yes, even yesterday. It's taking up parking, that's public parking, it's not for business. There is noise that's generated out of that, and honestly, you know, I've lived there for sixteen years. Since this building's been up, there's been additional noise. I'm also concerned about property value. If I'm trying to sell my property, it could potentially be negatively affected by having a commercial business. by having a commercial business 10 feet away from my bedroom window. So I'm adamantly against allowing business from home. There's rules, and there's a reason there's a, there's a reason there's zoning, there's a reason there's rules. I'm also a disabled veteran, retired from the United States Navy, 31 years. I appreciate Mr. Rose's service, but that kind of sounds like an excuse to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And next speaker card is L.H. Sweeney. Mr. Sweeney, come on up.
Hello. I'm a resident.
Name and address for the record, and then swear.
L.H. Sweeney, 2nd, 1151 Second Street North.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you all letting me talk. Again, I serve the community, I'm a veteran, and I appreciate his service and everything. Again, the same thing here, you look up here, growing the community. 142 has turned into like, they've got a school group that runs out of that place. Now he's wanting to run a business out of there. They took truck people to school from 142 out of there. I don't know why I never received anything that I got. But I did get this here about now he wants to run a business out. Also concerning me at 131 is behind there, two and a half, three years ago, a brand-new structure went up. It was permitted as a garage. But if you'll note there, at 131, there's no Egress so you can get back to get a car in a garage. You look up in the dictionary what a garage is for. So basically, it doesn't even have a garage door. So I don't know that the city of Jacksonville permitted them to build a garage, but it's a building back there. It's a real nice building, did a really great job, whoever they contracted to do that. But again, we get back to the thing, there's a code. And when they went out and served him, he's still allowed to operate his business. He just took the stuff off. He's got a big motorhome, he's parked in the front, where nobody, if he had businesspeople to come, so they're forced to park on the street or on the side where that vacant lot is, right there on 10th Avenue North. So I can see with the people who might be complaining is whatever they're doing there. You know, my thing is, is that the laws, the law reinforce, you know, you know what's going on. And if you're going to build a business, is it going to get bigger? Is it going to get smaller? I don't know, I can't predict it. We're all in a tough time right now. But as Mr. Morgan said, hey, property values go up and down. Well, now you've got like 142, who wants to move in with the running like a kids that go to school and a bus comes every morning? I mean, bus a van that takes a bunch of people to another location, which I can't, I contacted the people because there's issues. Now you're going to put a business in a residential area. My understanding, he had a place on 3rd Street. You know, maybe, you know, that was the place one where there is businesses. But this is a residential there. I bought this place in 95. So anyway, and as said, I appreciate it, and thanks for letting me.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Any questions for Mr. Sweeney?
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure I have these notated on record. So your biggest concern is parking and, and you said growth of the business?
Well, if he grows a business, yes, that's it. I can't say that it is, but right there, and like you said, when, I think she read the contingency on it, only 25% of 131 could be used as it. Well, 131 doesn't show that giant building in the back there, and I think that's a misnomer that it's not shown there because that's a brand-new building that was, what was permitted by Jacksonville. And it's in there, but it doesn't show on it. But it takes up right up to the back of his property there.
Thank you. And those are GIS amounts, they take a long time to get updated. So if it was permitted, it won't.
But it was here in the last two to three years.
Sure.
And all, and I've been after he sold one business and said, well, look, I can just build that building there and run everything, walk out the back door and go into my other building. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose, do you have any comments?
I do.
Yeah.
We did have.
Up here, name and address, swear in, please. Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Rose. I live at 131 Tenth Avenue North.
Ma'am, if I could, ma'am, I'm sorry. If I could get you to raise your right hand so I could swear you in.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I would appreciate the city coming and looking at what we do. It's, I do not believe that these gentlemen have ever been around at our house or in our garage. We don't have anybody in the garage. We have a small apartment. That's where they are. And it takes up about a fourth of our house. So I want someone to come and look because what they say doesn't make sense to me. They've never kind of knocked on our door or complained about anything. And we don't have any noise compared to his parties at the pool. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am. Just wanted to clarify, one thing you mentioned is the, the business is being run out of the house and not the garage?
Yes, that's true.
Thank you.
Any other comments, ma'am?
Just I would like for y'all to come and look because I can't understand where they got their information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose?
I'd like to make one, I'd like to make one additional comment. We've been operating down that house, in that garage, for two years now. Nobody says beans. Nobody knows that as far as parking goes. One car parked in my front yard in addition to my RV and my car. The other guy, when he comes, part-time, he parks on the street. We're not taking up any additional park. There's no noise, so they don't even know we're there. The only reason they know they're there is because they complained about our dogs. And they decided to come out. And I don't believe what's going on, and I don't want to keep my business, gentlemen. I don't want to sell my business. I'm 80 years old, I'm ready to sell it. Somebody comes up and, all right, sell it in a heartbeat. And I probably wouldn't do that, it won't take long. Thank you.
And Mr. Rose, any more questions?
I've got a question for Mr. Rose. Sorry, Mr. Rose, can't, I don't need for you to keep coming up here.
I'm hard here.
I have a question for you. You're going to have to respond, unfortunately.
Yes.
So I think two of the biggest issues I've heard is, is, that seem to be coming from the surrounding properties is parking, which you've addressed. Can you, can you speak to the growth of, we talked about it, but if there was a, I'll talk to Ms. Ireland about this, but if there was a limit to the amount of people you could have in your home?
If the business grows, I'd have to find some place to put it. I couldn't continue to operate here anyway. This department is too small, it's very, it's, it's smaller than this area in here.
So a question, question for you, and this is, this is just me asking questions. If we were to conditionally approve this based on putting a limit of people coming to help you operate this business, would you be okay with that?
Say that again?
If we conditionally approve this while also putting a limit to the amount of people that can come in to help here on a daily basis, would you be okay with that? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Rose, thank you. Okay, we've had speakers, we've had the proponent, we've had our discussion. Do you have something?
I do. I just want to point out a couple of things. A Type 1 home occupation is automatically a permitted use in all of our residential zoning districts. The Type 2 is what requires approval. And really, the only difference between the Type 1 and Type 2 is that under the Type 2, a home occupation can have one additional employee. Doesn't specify whether that's one employee total or one at a time, but we kind of interpreted to say, you know, one at a time. So if he had multiple employees, it wouldn't necessarily be a problem if they weren't all there at the same time. He wouldn't, we wouldn't consider him in violation of that if there was one there at a time. The RV is a separate issue, but I don't know what precipitated the call from, to code enforcement. But I do know that they have, they, you know, they will address any issues whether it is, just is approved as a Type 1 home oc or whether you guys approve it as a Type 2 home oc. There's still only limited to the one employee that is a non-resident employee. But again, I haven't physically been to the property. That's her code enforcement officer to determine what, if any violations, they may have. She hasn't been able to address that because we don't know what section of the code to apply since he had an application pending. So it'd either be the Type 1 or the Type 2. But there is already a limit on employees, I know you mentioned, considering that. Just wanted to clear that up.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot. Can you give us just two examples of a Type 1 and a Type 2, type 0 occupation?
I mean, I can't think of any examples specifically in terms of businesses, but for the most part, for businesses that are following our home occupation rules, 99% of them are Type 1, we do not get any complaints. It's someone that has all their employees coming in the morning to pick up their work trucks and equipment, then we get a call. We don't have a lot of Type 2 home occupations that have been approved. I don't think I've seen one since I've been here. There's maybe half a dozen total that have come through the Planning Commission for approval. So again, really, the only difference between the 1 and 2 is the ability to have that extra employee on-site that does not reside at the property.
Thank you.
Heather, how do we verify where the work is actually done? Because there seems to be contradictory information.
Right, well, the, our code enforcement officer still has to address the complaint. But again, since we didn't know which standards to apply, whether it would be the Type 1 or Type 2 home occupation, she hasn't, she just kind of put it on hold until she knew which standards to apply. So since there's already an active code case, our code enforcement officer will be able to investigate that and determine if there's any violations at all.
So, Ms. Ireland, are we going to define this evening whether we're talking Type 1 or Type 2?
Well, the code already defines that for you guys. A Type 1 is already a permitted use, so.
So this is a 2.
This is a 2. That's what he's asking for.
No doubt there.
Yeah, Type 1 does not require your approval, Type 2 does.
Yeah. And then my second question was, if we wanted to continue with this code violation inspection and have that completed, if the proponent wanted to withdraw the request right now, get that scored away and come back, would that be an option?
I mean, I don't think it makes a difference because if he, whether or not he gets approved for a Type 2 home oc, there's still that open case. She's still going to go investigate it, whether it's approved or denied because there is, that has been a complaint.
Okay, the only reason I say that is Mrs. Rose specifically said at the podium that she wanted somebody to come out and see what they're doing.
Yeah, and, and Ms. Evers, our code enforcement officer, she's, she's already going to do that. But her and I spoke, she wasn't here today, so we couldn't talk about it prior to the meeting, but we spoke last week, and she said, you basically tell me what the Planning Commission does, and then her actions will, will go from there.
That's exactly what I was going to do, is move this forward. Let's say that we continue this evening, there's no withdrawal, and we continue to make a decision. If our decision is favorable for the business, and then the code enforcement officer finds a problem, she would still be able to withdraw the permission to continue?
If, if you, if it's approved tonight, then the code enforcement officer will know which standards to apply when she goes to the property. And she'll be able to say whether or not they're in any violation of these home occupation rules. So they would still apply if he has no violations, case closed. If he does, there's an opportunity to remedy them. If they're not remedied, then it goes to the magistrate.
That's perfect, Ms. Ireland, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
That's clear, very clear. Floor is open for any questions.
Heather, major differences between Type 1 and Type 2. What is he, what are we getting additional in 2 that we don't have in 1?
The, the biggest thing, at least from, from my perspective, is that for Type 2 only, you can have one employee on the property in addition to the residence. Kind of a smaller thing is under a Type 2, you can have one small illuminated sign. I don't recall seeing a sign. I did drive by to post that ugly orange sign. I don't recall seeing a sign for the business. That's, that's really it. That's the big difference, is the employee and the ability to have a very small, one-square-foot sign.
Just want to make a comment that my biggest issue with this was the, was the multiple employees that, that kind of scared me at first, having eight and plus. But the fact that this is clearly defined to be one employee at a time, I'd like to make a motion to approve based on this being a Type 2 home occupation.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second for approval. Ms. Ireland, can we have a call, please? Roll call, please.
Britton Sanders?
Yes.
John Scott Walker?
No.
David Dahl?
Yes. Your request has been approved, Mr. Rose. Okay, moving on. Thank you for the help on that, Ms. Ireland, appreciate it. PC 920 is our next item.
PC 920 is a concept plan for plot application. Owner and applicant is Husby LLC. Address 7563 Phillips Highway, Suite 208, Jacksonville, Florida. Agent is Conley and Wicker. 10060 Skinner Lake Drive, Suite 500, Jacksonville, Florida. And the property location is 921 Second Avenue South. The request is for a concept plan for plot approval for a proposed three-lot fee-simple townhouse subdivision located in an RM1 zoning district pursuant to Section 34503 of the Jacksonville Beach Land Development Code. The subject property is located on the north side of Second Avenue South between 9th and 10th Streets and contains a single-family dwelling unit that was built in 1940. The new owner, applicant, wishes to redevelop the property as a three-unit fee-simple townhouse project. The applicant's proposed site plan shows three attached fee-simple townhouse lots that meet the minimum residential RM1 townhouse lot size and street frontage standards, which again is 2,500 square feet for exterior lots and 1,500 square feet for interior lots. Adjacent property uses include a vacant residential lot to the east, single-family to the west, single- and multifamily to the south, and single-family to the north. The proposed three-unit townhouse project is consistent with the RM1 zoning district requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Ireland. Mr. Kennedy? Could be the same one.
Please, you can raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Charles Kennedy, 12375 Shore Acres Drive, Jacksonville, Florida. 82285.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I, yes, I do.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
I have nothing to add to what Heather said. She did a beautiful job describing the project.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? No questions? That will close the public portion. Mr. Kennedy's given us his comments, and we'll open for a debate or a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to second. Roll call, please.
John Scott Walker?
Yes.
David Dahl?
I hate to approve these, but my vote is yes.
Britton Sanders?
Yes.
Get it on the record. Move right along to the last one, 1020, please.
Last one. 1020 is also a concept plan for plat application. Owner and applicant is Sparkle Homes LLC, that's a new one. 7563 Phillips Highway, Suite 208, Jacksonville, Florida. Agent Conley and Wicker, 10060 Skinner Lake Drive, Suite 500. The property location is 850 South 5th Avenue. Do you mind changing the slide real quick? Thank you. The request is for the concept plan for plat approval for amendment of an approved five-lot fee simple townhouse subdivision located in an RM1 zoning district pursuant to Section 34503 of the Land Development Code. Subject property is located on the south side of 5th Avenue South between 8th and 9th Street and was previously part of a larger parcel. The property received concept plan for plat approval as part of a 15-unit townhouse development on May 13th of 2019 under PC 11-19. The applicant wishes to slightly amend the lot widths for just the westerly five townhouse lots. Each proposed new lot is still consistent with the required minimum lot sizes and widths for townhouse lots in RM1 zoning districts. Adjacent uses include multiple family to the north, south, east, and west. Directly to the south are six two-family dwellings. To the northeast and west are properties owned by the Jacksonville Housing Authority. Each of these JHA properties are being redeveloped with 16 new units each with required parking provided on-site. The proposed townhouse project is consistent with the existing and proposed multiple family uses surrounding the subject property.
Thank you, Ms. Ireland. Mr. Kennedy?
And we're going to do it again. So you're naming address for the record?
Charles Kennedy, 12375 Shore Acres Drive, Jacksonville, Florida.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, floor is yours.
I have nothing to add to what Heather has said.
Questions for the applicant? No questions, thank you. So that concludes the public portion of the hearing. Any debate, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to second, roll call, please.
Britton Sanders?
Yes.
John Scott Walker?
Yes.
David Dahl?
Yes.
Okay, I guess that's, that's everything we got tonight.
I have a, I have a couple of notes, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Oh, you may.
So at your place, there was a notice of training, planning commission training on Monday, July 13th, which is our next meeting. We do not have another one in June. This will be training provided by our city attorney, and I believe you guys have met him, I think he came to one meeting shortly after he started with us. So that, that training will be right before our 7:00 PM planning commission meeting, so it'll be at 6:00. And the last item is just a reminder of Form 1, that should have been mailed to you from the clerk's office, is due July 1st, and I think I emailed you guys about that as well. I think I did. It's been a busy day. And that's all. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Okay, with that, meeting's closed.